Okay, we'll go ahead and call our September fifteenth, 2020 City-County Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Ms. Tabor, would you call the roll?
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Ritchie. Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
And Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioners, you've all had a chance to review your minutes in your packet. Are there any questions about those? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Taken.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn. Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Brown.
Stane.
Commissioner Ritchie. Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Graham, I request that you order that the record include all statutory and regulatory provisions for tonight's hearings, also the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, the qualifications of each staff witness, and finally, I request that you administer the oath for each of those witnesses.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir, sir.
All right, thank you. Next item is subdivision and site development plans. Are there any questions about those? If not, I'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Taken.
Taken.
No motion there? Okay. Let's see. Megan or Mr. Thornberry, will you be doing the audit presentation? All right, go ahead and have you next, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Stephen Thornberry with Hensley and Thornberry CPAs. Happy to be here tonight and present the audited financials to each of you. We recently finished our audit of the fiscal year June 30, 2022, and we're happy to report that we're able to offer an unqualified opinion on these financials. Another way of saying that is it's the highest level of assurance that we may provide on any financial statement that we do audit. So very good job on the commission, Ben, Megan as well. Another example of the organization is that there were no adjusting journal entries needed in order for these financial statements to be free of any material misstatements that we're aware of. Just quickly go through some highlights of the audited financial statements. I think each of you may have a copy of those, but on page three, we do have the, excuse me, we do have the balance sheet. These financials are on the cash basis, so it's going to be strictly cash received and cash dispersed. At the end of last fiscal year, there was $653,000 of cash unrestricted, and there was $2.6 million of restricted cash for surety bonds. The liabilities of surety bonds will agree with those restricted cash, and then the fund balance of 653 will agree with the unrestricted cash amounts. On the next page, page four, are the statement of activities of and governmental funds, revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. Total revenues last year were 1.6 million. Fees represented 514,000 of those, and then the city and county each contributed 481,000. Those three categories constitute 89% of all revenues received. The next section there, the expenditures, the top three items are salaries, retirement and employee benefits, which make up 75% of your total expenditures of 1.4 million. Comparing revenues against expenditures, it delivers an excess of revenues or a surplus of $222,000. The next several pages list footnotes to these financial statements. I would just state that these footnotes are very similar to what was presented in the prior year. There were no additional footnotes added or no footnotes taken away from the previous year. On page eight, there's a budget to actual comparison. The far right column will show your variances. Positive variance simply means that you exceeded the budget or did favorably. A negative will be that you performed unfavorably. You'll notice that the total receipts has a positive variance of 303,000, so your revenues did exceed your budget by that amount. The majority of all these dispersments by category had a positive variance as well. And at the end of page nine, you'll notice that you had a total positive variance of $653,000. That's going to be basically your carry forward into the fiscal year June of 2023. The last page is our report on internal control. I would simply point out that we have no items or any significant deficiencies noted during the audit while we were gaining an understanding of internal control and performing the audit. Again, we're very thankful that we're able to partner with the commission, and at this point, I will answer any questions anyone may have over the audited financial statements from last year.
Commissioners, any questions regarding the audit? Hearing none. First, I'd like to congratulate the staff on such a glowing audit review, and if there are no further questions, I will entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
Taken.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item on our agenda is a letter of credit and performance bonds. We have four. Any questions regarding those? And I think I do need a motion for those. Is that correct? So I'll entertain a motion.
Moved.
Chair Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't think we have any old business, so at this point, we will go ahead and enter into our public hearing. Our first item on the agenda is 2022-17 Flume. Carolyn and Kate's Glass has filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately 4.24 acres located at 766 Old Matlock Union Road from agriculture to rural density residential. If that item passes, the next item will be 2022-62Z County. The same applicant has filed an application for a zone change from Ag to RE with a general development plan. We'll hear our staff report.
We had a pre-application meeting on August the 1st for the property that you mentioned, and it is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is agriculture. And the future land use is agriculture. As you mentioned, the applicant is proposing to amend the flume for 4.24 acres from agriculture to rural and city residential. If the flume amendment is approved, the applicant would like to rezone the property in order to divide the property into a maximum of two single-family residential lots, and the existing home is proposed to remain. So the applicant has supplied a site plan there for you to review that depicts that. Looking over at the future land use map category section there, LU 1.1.4 of the comprehensive plan outlines procedures for amending the flume, and those are provided there for your review and guidance. The applicant included the following information, did provide a narrative with their application to address that criteria that is listed for you, and the planning commission should determine if the applicant has adequately addressed the criteria in order to amend the flume. Looking down at the site characteristics review, the transportation infrastructure, the property has frontage on Matlock Old Union Road, which is a county-maintained rural local roadway, has 15 feet of pavement width, and the property also has frontage on HR Whitlock Road, which is also a county-maintained rural local roadway, with 16 feet of pavement width. Neither road meets the 18-foot minimum width required for acceptance for new county roads. But this application complies with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review with those considerations noted regarding road width. Looking over at site design and compatibility review, architectural features, existing homes on lots fronting Old Matlock Old Union Road or adjacent to the subject property, home sizes ranging from 648 square feet to 3,159 square feet, with a median home size of 1,577 square feet. The existing home that is located on the property contains 1,139 square feet. The applicant has proposed a minimum home size of 1,100 square feet for the new residence in DPC number two. Looking down at the building material review, existing homes on lots fronting Matlock Old Union Road, including the existing home, have exteriors of vinyl, brick, and stone. Building foundations are mostly plain face or split face block, including the foundation for the current residence, and the applicant has proposed similar material requirements in DPC number four. The application complies with majority of the items regarding site design, and the planning commission should consider if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Moving down to the development plan conditions, the applicants submitted the following DPCs. Number one addresses septic system usage. Number two addresses the existing and any proposed new driveway entrances. Number three, any new single-family residence shall have at least 1,100 square feet of heated cooled living space exclusive of garages and porches. Number four, any new residence shall have an exterior comprised of brick, stone, cement board siding, engineered wood siding, or vinyl siding. There should be no exposed smooth face, plain face block above grade. Number five addresses the building orientation. Number six prohibits mobile homes. Number seven addresses tree preservation, and number eight addresses sinkholes. Moving down to the focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 16 items, and I'll just highlight a few of those. The planning commission should determine if the applicant has provided sufficient evidence to support the proposed flume amendment, and if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. The proposal may comply with LU two. The planning commission should determine if the proposal will result in high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. The planning commission should determine if the proposal complies with NCR 2.4 and NCR 2.4.1. While the development is located in an area with sufficient water pressure to meet the minimum fire protection requirements, the current flume designation for the property is agriculture. Again, there is that about the road width, and the planning commission should determine if the proposal will result in premature development pressure on the countryside, and whether or not we'll set a precedent for loss of farmland and loss of agriculture character in the vicinity. The proposal may comply with HN 2.1 and HN 4. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location, and if it will enhance the array of housing options in the area. Looking back to the first page for your points to consider, the application complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process with considerations regarding to the current road width for Matlock Old Union Road and HR Whitlock Road. That is all we have for this staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
There have been some other rezonings in the area recently, I would say, from Ag to residential estate. So can you tell me when that, when those rezonings happened? Are they recent? I mean, how recent?
Do you have particular ones, or are you just talking about the adjacent properties? Just new building, new structures, new homes?
I think I can answer that. In looking at the zoning map, it looks like there are some parcels that are zoned RE residential estate. Those would have been converted in 2014 when we did a conversion for smaller lots that were still zoned agriculture. So while the homes may be new and the zoning was part of the conversion process in 2014, those lots have been there for quite some time.
You have other questions for staff? Is the applicant present tonight? Is there anything you'd like to add? Ma'am, if you would, ma'am, would you come to the podium? We have to record it for the record. And would you state your name, please?
Carolyn Kate's Glass.
Carolyn, Ms. Glass, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, go ahead and make your statement.
I would like to ask, in the event that, maybe if there was involuntary destruction that come through that area, that if I could replace the existing home that I'm living in, in a smaller capacity than what it is? It's currently 1,100 square feet.
So we're going to defer to staff here, I think.
So when you say a smaller house, what size house are you referring to?
Well, I would think more of something compatible for a single person, elderly, aging person, that could live there and maintain it and take care of it.
Aren't we? So it would be 1,100 square feet on the, if your existing house was knocked down?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm asking, and could I lower it to maybe 1,000 or 900 or so feet, something as, again, that someone who's aging and trying to care for themselves in the current environment and maintain?
Well, the issue there, I think, is to lower it, you would have to lower it for the new lot also.
Could we do it separately?
Yeah, we could. We could, with Hamp's assistance, we could probably come up with an alternate option for the existing home that's located at 766 Matlock Old Union Road. If it was involuntarily destroyed, you could set a different square footage for that.
Okay, so I want to make sure that I understand. We're currently discussing the existing structure, not the new lot, correct?
Sure.
And your request is that for the new, if that home were voluntarily destroyed, that could you?
Involuntarily.
Involuntarily destroyed, I'm sorry. Could you rebuild that structure with a lower square footage, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so Hamp, would you do the legalese there? Because I'm not sure how I would address that. Would you like the minimum square footage to be of that replacement home?
Possibly 900 square feet, yeah. Just, again, something, one bedroom for one person to take care of and not have to go to nursing home and stuff of that nature.
So why don't we add a sentence to DPC number three that says, if the existing single-family residence located at 766 Matlock Road should be involuntarily destroyed, comma, any new single-family residence constructed at that, on that lot, shall have at least 900 square feet of heated cooled living space, exclusive of garages and porches. Is that agreeable?
Yes, with the correction that it's 766 Matlock Old Union.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or comments regarding this application? Okay, hearing none, we will, commissioners, any other questions for you? We will entertain a first motion on the flume, and that will be the full board.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 2022-17 Flume, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed flume amendment has met the directive of amending the flume as outlined in LU 114 in the comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Chair Gay. Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel. Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie. And Chair Graham.
Ma'am. Our next motion will be for the zone change.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 2022-62Z County. Based upon its testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
You have a second?
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
The motion passes, and we'll go to the Warren Fiscal Court. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is 2022-18 Flume. Handy Homes LLC care of Matthew and Adrian Hardy and Shelley, I'm sorry, Jeffrey and Shelley Anderson have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a tract of land containing approximately 9.526 acres located at 1395 and Zero Gherkin Road from agriculture to rural density residential. And we'll hear our staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on June the 7th for the property that you mentioned, and it is highlighted, the properties that are highlighted in yellow there. Current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is agriculture, and the future land use is agriculture. And the applicants are proposing to amend the flume for 9.526 acres from agriculture to rural density residential. And if the flume amendment is approved, they would like to rezone the properties in order to divide the properties into a maximum of non-RE lots. The existing home is proposed to remain on a lot not included in the rezoning boundary. And the applicants have supplied an exhibit for you to review there. Looking over at the future land use map category, again, LU 1.1.4 of the comprehensive plan outlines the procedures for amending the flume, and the applicants did provide a narrative to address that criteria. The planning commission should determine if the applicants have adequately addressed the criteria, including if the proposed development is clearly compatible with existing surrounding development. Staff has outlined several points to consider on page one and two of the staff report for you to review. Looking down at the site characteristics review, the existing lot configuration and proposed layout is shown on the attached development plan. If the application is approved, setbacks will adhere to the RE standards, except for a 50-foot front setback for new residences. The 48-acre farm was recently subdivided into nine five-acre Ag lots and auctioned. The applicants purchased all nine lots and would like to subdivide and reconfigure portions of the property, again, into total of nine RE lots. The preliminary development plan depicts four remaining Ag lots. However, there is nothing preventing the applicants from subdividing the 20-acre tract that is shown into four lots for a total of 16 lots. Looking down at natural features, the applicants did not address preservation of any of the existing vegetation, nor did they address the known sinkholes in the vicinity. This application complies with some of the items in the site characteristics review with considerations noted regarding lot size, total number of lots, tree preservation, and sinkholes. Looking down at the site design and compatibility review, surrounding densities, within one-half mile densities, median density of 0.04 dwelling units per acre, within a half-mile densities range with a median density of 0.20 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed density is 0.94 dwelling units per acre, which is 235 times the median density within a fourth mile and almost five times the median density within a half mile. Looking over at the surrounding architectural features, is it existing homes on lots fronting Gherkin Road or adjacent to the subject properties? Median home sizes range from 1,115 square feet to 2,684 square feet, with a median home size of 1,792, and an average of 1,878 square feet. Majority of homes have at least a two-car attached garage or carport. The applicants have proposed a minimum home size of 1,300 for new residences, and nearly 500 square feet less than, which is nearly 500 square feet less than the median. DPC number eight requires that each residence constructed on the property have a two-car garage. Looking at the materials review, 40% of the existing homes on lots fronting Gherkin Road have vinyl exteriors with a mix of brick, stone, masonite siding, and wood siding. 79% of the homes have a brick foundation. Foundations for the remaining homes are a mix of split-faced block, plain face block, imposed and pure. The applicants have outlined material and foundation requirements in DPC number one and two, but have not limited the amount of vinyl that can be utilized. Split-faced block is proposed to be permitted for foundation materials. Looking at the building orientation and front setback, the applicants have proposed a 50-foot front building setback in DPC number nine, which is similar to the front setback for the existing residents. The residents located on the adjacent property to the west is set back roughly 125 feet from the front property line, and the adjacent property to the south is set back from the front property line more than 250 feet. The planning commission should determine the impact on the character and pattern of development, specifically if a 50-foot front setback is imposed for new residences, considering that the existing setback for the homes on opposing sides of the development far exceed the setback. This application complies with some of the items regarding site design, with consideration noting regarding density, home size, exterior materials, foundation materials, and proposed front setback. The planning commission should consider if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Looking down at the development plan conditions, number one, residents located on the property shall be constructed with an exterior of vinyl siding or cement siding or brick. Number two, residences constructed on the property shall incorporate a split-faced block or brick foundation. Number three addresses the roof pitch. Number four, any new residents constructed on the property shall contain a minimum of 1,300 square feet. Number five. Number five, no modular or manufactured homes shall be allowed on the property. Number six addresses the building orientation. Number seven addresses the septic system usage. Number eight, all residences, all residences constructed on, constructed on the premises shall have a two-car garage. Number nine is that building setback shall be fifty feet from the right-of-way, and number ten addresses access. Looking at the focus twenty thirty category review, staff evaluated eight, evaluated eighteen items, and I'll just mention a few. The planning commission should determine if the applicants have provided sufficient evidence to support the proposed flume amendment, and if the proposed lot size, density, home size, exterior materials, and foundation materials and proposed front setbacks are compatible with the properties in the surrounding area. The planning commission should determine if the proposed exterior materials, foundation materials, and home sizes will result in high-quality development that will protect the character of the area, and if the application therefore complies with LU two. The proposal does not comply with NCR one point one or NCR one point three, as the applicants did not address sinkholes. The proposal does not comply with LU two point one point four, PR one point seven or NCR one point, one point six, as the applicants did not address preservation of any existing The planning commission should determine if the proposal complies with NCR two point four and NCR two point four point one. While the development is located in an area with sufficient water pressure to meet the minimum fire protection requirements, the current flume designation for the properties are agriculture. And the, the planning commission should determine if the proposal will result in premature development pressure on the countryside, and whether or not it will set a precedent for loss of farmland. The planning commission should determine if the proposed number of lots that increased in density where the current flume designation is agriculture is suitable in this location, and if the proposal will contribute to the array of housing options in Warren County, and if the application therefore complies with HM two point one and HM, uh, two, uh, HM four. Looking back at the points to consider, the forty-eight acre farm was recently subdivided and auctioned into nine five-acre lots. While the flume designation does support this style of development, the existing lot sizes as subdivided for the auction are currently configured. If the flume amendment and rezoning applications are approved, up to sixteen lots would be permitted, which is not currently compatible with the existing flume designation. The proposed density of this development is point nine four dwelling units per acre, which is two hundred and thirty-five times the median density within a half, uh, fourth And the median and average lot sizes within a fourth mile are five acres and fifteen point six acres respectively. The proposed minimum lot size for this development is one acre. The applicants have proposed a fifty-foot front building setback, which is similar to the front setback for the existing residents. However, the home located on the adjacent property to the west is set back a hundred and twenty-five feet from the property lawn, and the home to the south is set back roughly two hundred and fifty feet from the property lawn. The median home size for existing homes in the area is one thousand seven hundred and ninety-two square feet, and the proposed minimum home size for this is a hundred and thir, uh, is one thousand three hundred square feet. Next page, forty percent of the existing homes in the area have vinyl exteriors with the rest of mixed brick, stone, masonite siding. Again, the DPCs that were submitted allow a hundred percent vinyl exteriors and all building foundations to be split-faced block. The applicants did not address sinkholes, and again, they did not exist the existing preservation, vegetation preservation on the properties, nor do they commit to planting any new trees on the properties. I know that was a lot, but that's all we have for this staff report, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question. Under staff review summary, it indicates that while the preliminary development plan only depicts four ag lots, however, there is nothing preventing the applicants from subdividing the twenty-acre tract into four lots. Does staff had any discussion as to whether or not the expansion of those four lots would have any bearing or impact on water adequacy or anything like that? Would that still be, there still be water adequacy if, if they do expand?
Yeah, they, they have adequate water and fire hydrants in this stretch of the road, even, even if those were to be further subdivided.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Pardon me? Yeah. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
And would, would you like to come forward and, and add anything?
I would add anything.
Would you come forward? I think the commissioners have, have a couple of questions for you. Would you state your name and address, please?
Jeff Anderson, seven two three Northview Court, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Perfect, all right. Commissioners, you have questions?
Mr. Anderson, would you mind addressing the two concerns with the sinkholes and the, and the trees? Are, are you, are you okay to put those in, that all sinkholes will be fixed?
Yes, sir, but the sinkholes that are on the property are not on the residential lots. They are, that we're trying to get the RE approved there on the ag lots. But if anything appears, we'll gladly improve those sinkholes. I mean, we don't want, you know, any danger zone there, basically to say. And any of, the only trees that I can think of was be on the lot on the west side, I believe it is, the little L-shaped lot. There's some trees in the fence row, but other than that, there's none on the ones that we're changing to.
Something we see down here, would you be willing to plant a couple of trees in each yard?
So, Mr. Anderson. Uh, if I hear you correctly, you would agree to add a DPC, a, 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 a gen, a development plan condition that would read this way. Sinkholes detected on the property prior to or during construction, excuse me, or during construction will be repaired or protected with a sinkhole structure using methods approved by Warren County Public Works. Yes, sir. Would you also agree that all existing mature trees on the property shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible? Yes, sir. Excuse me. And would you also finally agree to install at least two trees on, on each residential lot? Yes, sir. Excuse me, I'm sorry to struggle through all of that, but thank you. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you, Ham. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Anderson? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll remind the commission that we have two items. The first item is the, I'm, I'm sorry, I was about to get ahead of myself. Do we have anyone in the audience who has any questions or comments regarding this item? Okay, very good. And so I will remind the commission that we have two items. The first item is, is the flume. The second item is twenty twenty-two sixty-four Z County, and that is the rezoning application from ag to RE. Hearing no other questions, we'll entertain a motion.
I make the motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty twenty-two eighteen flume. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU one point one point four in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sissel.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am. And with that passing, with that item passing, we will entertain a motion for the rezoning.
Make the motion to approve the propose, proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan docket number twenty twenty-two sixty-four Z CO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am. Both motions are approved, and they will go to the Warren Fiscal Court. Next item on our agenda is twenty twenty-two sixty-five ZBG Jaber Properties LLC care of Bader, Nassar, Jaber, has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately one point nine five acres located at twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-eight Russellville Road from Highway Business to RM three multifamily residential with a general development plan. We'll hear our staff report.
Chair, had a pre-application meeting on July the seventh for the property that you mentioned, and that is highlighted in yellow. The current zoning is highway business. Current land use is single-family residential, and the future land use is commercial. The applicant is proposing to rezone one point nine five acres from Highway Business to RM three in order to construct a maximum of twenty-one units on the properties. They have also supplied, I think, a couple of exhibits there for you to review. Looking over at the site characteristics review, the proposed layout of the site is depicted on the, the attached development plan. Setbacks will adhere to the standards set forth for the RM zone, except for the front yard setback. The front yard setback for new structures shall be no closer to Russellville Road than the current front setback for the existing structures, and that is outlined in development plan condition number thirteen. Cultural or historical features, the existing homes were built in nineteen forty and nineteen fifty-five and will be demolished to accommodate the development. The applicant did agree to donate salvageable materials to a charitable organization and to donate the structure, structures to the local fire departments, and that is outlined in DPC number seventeen and eighteen. This application complies with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review. Looking down at site design and compatibility review, surrounding densities, densities for current multifamily developments on Enterprise Courts are nineteen point eight dwelling units per acre, twenty dwelling units per acre, twenty-four point four five dwelling units per acre, and twenty-seven point zero one dwelling units per acre. Fox Ridge Apartments are twenty-four point five one dwelling units per acre, and Keystone Commons are fifteen point three four dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for this development is ten point seven, seven dwelling units per acre. Proposed open space, the minimum amount of open space required in the RM three zone is eighty percent, but the applicant has agreed to provide a minimum of twenty-five percent open space in the development plan conditions. A dog park in Ganzibo are depicted on the attached development plan. DPC number eight requires that the dog park be incorporated into the development. Pedestrian bicycle or transit facilities, there are existing sidewalks on Russellville Road. The DPC requires that the site incorporate a pedestrian connection to the existing sidewalk along Russellville Road. And the application complies with the majority of the items assessed in the site design and compatibility review section. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Looking down at the development plan conditions, the property shall be plotted to combine the two lots into one. Number two, property will be developed with a maximum of twenty-one residential units. Number three, property will be developed with a minimum of twenty-five percent open space. Number four, each unit shall contain a minimum of one garage parking space. Number five, building adjacent to Russellville Road shall face the public road. Number six, building materials shall be brick, stone, or other fibers, cementitious material. Vinyl shall be limited to softits and trim. Number seven, foundations shall be brick or stone. No, I think that should be plain-faced or split-faced block is allowed. Number eight, development shall include community mailbox and dog park. Number nine, property to be developed with a single access to Russellville Road, and that will be coordinated with KYTC. Number ten, site shall be developed with a pedestrian connection to the existing sidewalks on Russellville Road. Number eleven, existing tree line to the east shall be protected to the greatest extent possible, subject to final engineering, and the owner reserves the right to remove any dead or diseased trees. Number twelve, all utilities serving the site shall be underground. Number thirteen, any new proposed structure will be located no closer than the existing structures on site. Fourteen, front parking adjacent to Russellville Road should be limited to no more than two surface spaces per unit. Fifteen, a maximum building height shall not exceed thirty-five feet. Number sixteen, all parking lot lighting shall have uniform pole and fixture style. Number seventeen, salvage materials from the existing structures may be made available to Habitat Restore or similar organization. And number eighteen, existing structures may be available to the local fire department for training, for, prior to demolition. Looking down at the focus twenty thirty category review, staff evaluated seventeen items, and I'll highlight a few. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area, and if it complies with LU one point one point three. This proposal may comply with LU two and LU two point one. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. The proposal may comply with LU two point five point two and HM one point two. The planning commission should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area, and if it will protect and stabilize the older residential uses located in the vicinity. The applicant did agree to protect the existing tree line to the east to the greatest extent possible. The applicant did not agree to protect any of the existing trees located in the central portion of the development, as these will likely have to be removed to accommodate proposed building, parking areas, and travelway. The planning commission should determine compliance with LU two point one point four, PR one point seven, or NCR one point one point six. The proposal may comply with HM one and HM one point three. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve existing character and pattern of development within the area, and if it will strengthen nearby properties. The proposal may comply with HM two point one and HM four, and the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is located in a suitable location, and if it will enhance the array of housing options in, in the area. Looking back to the points to consider, the proposed density for this development is lower than the density for nearby multifamily residential developments, and the proposal complies with majority of the criteria excess, assessed in the review process. That is all we have for the staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Pardon me? So, I assume by, with this elevation, we're addressing that there, there will be uniform in appearance, is that correct? Is that what we're assuming? That, the DPC doesn't require it, and, and I didn't know if you guys had discussed that or not. Okay. So, that's my next question. Can we assume by default that it's going to be a, a, a single management company? Can we assume by default that it's going to be a single management company? Okay. All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you come forward, please? Would you state your name and address, please?
Bader Nassar Jaber, 25, 23 years old.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, commissioners, questions?
I think the, we assume everything's going to be uniform, same look.
Yes.
Can we go ahead and put that in?
Of course.
And then the other thing, we assume there'll probably be one management company to handle the whole complex?
Yes.
Okay.
And there'll be my management.
That's fine, that's fine.
We're assuming that's what you meant, but we want to go ahead and put it into the development plan conditions as well.
Mr. Jaber, is that correct?
Yeah.
So why don't we add a sentence to development plan condition number two and say, if you agree, all residential units shall be of uniform exterior material and appearance.
Yes.
And shall be managed by a single management company.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions or comments on this application? Okay, and hearing no other questions from the commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with conditions upon a general development plan, document number 2022-65ZBG. Based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is passed and will go to the City of Bowling Green for approval. Next item on our agenda is 2022-66Z County. Annie Austin has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 4.80 acres located at 12250 Nashville Road from agriculture to RE residential estate with a general development plan. We'll hear our staff report.
So we had a pre-application meeting on May 26th of this year for the property, as you mentioned. The current zoning of the property is agriculture. The current land use is single-family residential. And the future land use designation for the property is agriculture. As you mentioned, the applicant is proposing to rezone 4.82 acres to RE residential estate in order to subdivide the property into two single-family residential tracts. The existing home is proposed to remain. And as the property is designated agriculture, the property is a non-conforming agricultural parcel, less than five acres in size. And only one new lot is being created, so no flim amendment is being required with this application. Moving over to page two, looking at the site characteristics review. There it is. The applicants have provided the preliminary development plan. Again, there is an existing home proposed to remain. Setbacks will adhere to the RE standard set forth in the zoning ordinance with an additional 200-foot front yard setback as specified in DPC number six. Moving down to the site design and compatibility review and looking at surrounding architectural features. The existing home is one-story, contains 1,350 square feet of living space and has a one-car attached garage. Other homes in the area range from 1,008 square feet to 6,796 square feet with a median home size of 2,133 square feet. Most have an attached garage or carport. The applicant has not imposed a garage or carport requirement for any new homes constructed on the property in their DPCs. Overall, the application complies with the majority of the items in the site design and compatibility review section with considerations noted regarding the garage or carport requirement for new homes constructed on the property. Looking at their development plan conditions, the applicant has submitted, one, any new residence shall have at least 1,400 square feet of heated and cooled living space, exclusive of garages and porches. Number two, deals with orientation facing Nashville Road. Three, addresses tree preservation. Four, any new residence shall be constructed of brick, stone, or concrete-based siding. There shall be no exposed, smooth-faced plain block above grade. Five, deals with sinkholes and coordination with Warren County Public Works. Six, any new home constructed on the property shall be setback a minimum of 200 feet, again, from the front property line. Seven, the existing residents will continue to use the existing septic system. And coordination with Barron River Health Department shall perform, they shall perform a site evaluation for any new residents prior to the issuance of a building permit. Eight, KYTC will be contacted for any new access or modifications to the existing access. And nine, there shall be a maximum of two lots. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area and if it complies with LU 1.1.3. The proposal may comply with LU 2. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. The proposal may comply with NCR 2.4. The planning commission should determine if the proposal will preserve and enhance the agricultural landscape and viewshed along Nashville Road. The planning commission should also determine compliance with NCR 2.4.1. The proposed development is located on a roadway greater than the 18-foot minimum standard for county roads but is served with inadequate water to meet the minimum fire protection requirements. Public sanitary sewer is not available in this area. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development will result in an increased amount of development pressure in the countryside. And finally, the proposal may comply with HN 2.1 and HN 4. The planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type and if the additional lot construction of a new residence is believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. Looking back to the points to consider on page one. Staff have outlined that the application complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process with considerations noted below regarding the garage requirement for any new homes constructed on the property. And again, the existing home has a one-car attached garage. A majority of other homes in the area have an attached garage or carport and the DPCs do not include that garage or carport requirement. And that is all we have for this report, but I will be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? I do have one and if this isn't a typo, you just tell me. Item number four reads, as we get to the second sentence, shall have no exposed, smooth-faced, and then it says plain block. And I assume that that possibly means plain-faced block. Is that correct? So would we, would it be okay for us to insert that? To read plain-faced block?
Oh, I see what you.
Just insert.
Smooth, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
But we'll insert the word hyphen faced after the word plain. So it'll read plain-faced block.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Is the applicant present? And would you step forward, please? Would you state your name for the record?
Annie Austin.
And your address, please.
12250 Nashville Road, Woodburn.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you. And Ms. Austin, first, let me see if there are any questions from the commissioners.
Ms. Austin, would you be willing to put in about the garage?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that we have at least a minimum of one-car garage.
Yes, could I do carport or garage? Could I do a minimum of one carport or garage?
Sure.
Okay.
We'll just put it that way.
All right.
Mr. Moore, if you'll stay at the podium just for a moment. Mr. Moore is going to give you the wording to that and let you agree to that stipulation.
So why don't we, Ms. Austin, look at DPC number four and we'll add a sentence that says, any new residence shall shall have constructed either a single-car garage or a carport.
Yes, sir.
And that's your agreement?
Yes.
Is there anything else? Oh, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or would like to make a comment on this item? Okay.
I thought I remembered something. And that is, we inserted that word faced.
Yes.
In that first sentence and you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions from the commissioners, we'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditions upon a general development plan, document number 2022-66Z County. Based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you for catching that phone.
And so we will likely need a motion from one of those five people.
So do we need to take the motion that we have off the floor and add a new? Understood, very good, all right.
I make the motion, make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan, document number 2022-66ZCO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliances with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Gay, I apologize.
Oh, there's no problem. I was out of order.
He was just trying to help out with it. The motion passes and will go to Warren Fiscal Court. Next item on our agenda is 2022-67Z County. Thornton Investments LLC has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 114.63 acres with a general development plan. We'll hear our staff report.
Thank you, Chair Graham. We had a pre-application meeting back in May for the properties you just outlined on Davenport Road and Scottsville Road. The current zoning, as you mentioned, is agriculture. The use is agriculture and the property at the front is vacant. The future land use map designation is low-density residential. Jumping to page two, we'll look at a couple of things in the site characteristics review. I'll pull up the concept plan here and this is the proposed layout. Setback slot size and lot width will follow the requirements for the RS1B zone. Under transportation infrastructure, the proposed development does have frontage on Davenport Road, which would be the road here at the bottom. And also on Burford Lane, which is the road up here at the top. Both are county-maintained rural local roadways. They are narrower than the typical 18-foot minimum required for county road acceptance. And if this proposal moves forward, they will be required to improve those roads in accordance with the requirements of the County Public Works Department. They will also have access via Scottsville Road to those roadways. And KYTC has requested turn lanes at both of those entrances as well. And we'll touch on that in just a second in the traffic impact study section. We have noted that about 40% of the property is classified as farmland of statewide importance. And we have also noted the existing residence on the property to be constructed in 1925. And if the proposal moves forward, the residence will be demolished to accommodate the proposed development. However, the applicants did agree to donate salvageable materials to a charitable organization and also agreed to offer the structure to local fire departments for training. The application does comply with the majority of the items we reviewed in the site characteristics review section with considerations noted regarding farmland of statewide importance and the demolition of the existing historic home. Looking at the surrounding density. On this map, you'll see that densities range from 0.10 to 3.18 dwelling units per acre. And the density for the proposed development is 1.76 dwelling units per acre. Jumping to page three, under proposed open space. The RS1B zone allows a maximum of 60% lot coverage, meaning that each lot would retain 40% open space. There is no formal open space proposed for the development. However, the applicants did agree to provide sidewalks on both sides of the street. The application does comply with a majority of the items in the site design and compatibility review with considerations noted regarding open space. This property is located within the boundary of the Scottsville Road corridor study area. And so there were four applicable policies that we reviewed. There were two that we'll note for your consideration. The first, number one, a requirement that all development visible from Scottsville Road be designed in such a way to appear to face Scottsville Road regardless of the location of the driveway access and parking. The homes are proposed to face the new internal streets. And so the applicants did agree to a screening requirement in development plan condition nine for these lots. And then jumping down to number four, an open space or green space or greenways connection requirement for new development. And the applicants did not address any additional open space, but again, did agree to provide sidewalks on both sides of the road. Looking on page four, we'll review the development plan conditions. Number one, limits the development to a maximum of 202 lots. Two, sets a minimum home size of 1,800 square feet. Three, requires a two-car attached garage. Four, limits building height to two stories. Five outlines building materials and limits vinyl only to soffits and foundations shall be brick or stone. Six, looks at utility placement and requires uniform streetlights. And that also includes that sidewalk requirement. Seven, addresses tree preservation and requires that a minimum of two trees per lot be planted. Eight, addresses access. Nine, looks at the screening requirement for those side or rear facades along Scottsville Road. Ten, addresses sinkholes and wetlands. And 11, addresses the historic structure. And I'm going to skip 12, that's a housekeeping item. And then 13 requires that the development have a homeowners association in which all owners shall be members. Looking at page five, under the traffic impact study section, there was no traffic impact study required. Again, as I had mentioned earlier, there will be required improvements for both Davenport Road and Burford Lane and also requirements for turn lanes at those entrances onto Scottsville Road. And the applicants did agree to these requirements in development plan condition number eight. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, the staff evaluated 20 items. We found six of those to be in compliance. There were two out of compliance and there are 12 for your consideration. The first is LU 1.1.3, that deals with compatibility. Next, LU 2 and 2.1, which looks at quality of development and character of the area. Next, 2.1.1, which looks at open space. Below that, you'll see LU 214, PR 1.7, and NCR 1.1.6, which looks at preservation of the tree canopy. On the next page, we have referenced LU 2.8, which deals with the Scottsville Road corridor study. The two items that are non-compliance are NCR 25 and 253, only because the historic home is proposed to be demolished. Jumping down to NCR 24, which looks at the agricultural landscape and viewshed along this section of Scottsville Road and the impact of the development on the Alveton Community. Below that, NCR 241, which looks at the countryside and whether or not the proposed development will result in premature development. And last, HN 2.1 and HN 4, which look at suitability of the proposed housing type and housing options in the area. Going to jump back to page one, touch on a couple of points to consider. The first of which is that the adjacent parcel to the north, if we go back to the zoning map, you'll see it's also zoned RS1B and it was rezoned in 2021. The submitted development plan conditions for this application are similar to, if not more restrictive than, the ones adopted for this development. And the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process with considerations noted regarding open space, farmland of statewide importance. with considerations noted regarding open space, farmland of statewide importance, and the demolition of the existing historic structure. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurt?
I have a question.
Sir?
Regarding the, I know that the Kentucky Transportation has waived the traffic impact study.
Right, they did not require a traffic impact study.
They do not require it.
Yes.
Do we know, has staff done any research to determine how many trips will be added per month related to traffic? Have we done any discussion with the applicant?
That's not something our staff would evaluate. That's something we left up to the Transportation Cabinet and the Warren County Public Works Department, and they would have factored that into their decision to not require a traffic impact study and also into their requested roadway improvements and turn lanes.
So basically, they felt improving the existing road is sufficient with?
Yes, coupled with right turn lanes on Scottsville Road into those entrances.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Thank you, Ms. Hurt.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or their representative present?
Chair Graham, members of the commission, Chris Davenport, 921 College.
But you tell the truth?
I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
I'm here on behalf of Thornton Investments tonight. Their principal, Ben Thornton, is here with me. I don't have, I have very little to add to this. I would point out that as far as density goes. Rachel's the pointer up here somewhere. That's not it. The most recent redevelopment in the area is actually adjacent to ours. It's right here. When Rachel was referencing the new development, that's the parcel she was referencing. Their density is 2.55. That is likewise an RS-1B development. It has, as far as materials, I think up to 25% of those homes are allowed to be vinyl. So I think when she said these are arguably more strict, I think primarily those are probably the points that she was contrasting. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport?
Chris, I actually, I mean, I commend y'all on the application. I mean, I think you touched on all the spots that staff likes for us to look at, and it looks to be a nice development.
Appreciate that. Of course, I can't, I can't offer anything the client doesn't authorize. So they worked hard on it, too.
Understood, a lot. We appreciate you getting them in a headlock and making them agree to all this stuff.
Thank you all.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Davenport? Is there anyone in the audience tonight who has any questions or comments regarding this application? Would you step to the microphone, please? Would you state your name and address for us, please?
Farrell Cosby, 275 Davenport Road.
And Mr. Cosby, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, and go ahead and make your statement or ask your question.
Basically, I lived in Alveton my entire life. I was born and raised there. On the Davenport Road, the section where they're proposing, I believe it's 202 houses, I built on a dead end for a reason, for privacy. And you take, if it's 202 houses, that's going to be at least 202 cars in and out past me every day. My privacy and my way of life is gone. That's basically me.
Rachel, how many, how many houses were allowed before this rezoning?
On Davenport Road, I think Ms. Davenport, the elderly lady that used to own it, her house was it. Glenn Richmond was on the corner, and I was on across the road. It was only three houses, and I think that's all that was allowed.
Are you asking about the property to the north that was rezoned in 2021? I don't know the number of lots, but the density, if we look at, actually, no, it's on the density map.
Is that the 255 Chris was talking about?
It's 157.
Okay.
Were permitted on the parcel to the north.
That's basically all I got to say.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Cosby. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has any questions or comments regarding this application? Okay, and hearing none, commissioners, no other questions for you? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon a general development plan, docket number 2021-67Z County. Based upon my testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance and objective action presented in the staff report. Therefore, the zoning map amendment is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. Further requests, this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Proper motion. That's a proper motion.
Thank you, ma'am. You stopped me there for a moment, Hamp.
Mr. Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and will go to the Warren Fiscal Court. Our next item, next item on our agenda is 2022-68Z County. Three Springs Hospitality LLC has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately 5.56 acres located at zero Three Springs Road, formerly 1772 Three Springs Road, from agriculture to RM3 multifamily residential with a general development plan. We'll hear our staff report.
Thank you, sir. We had a pre-application meeting back in March for the property you just described, located on Three Springs Road. To get your bearings, Small House Road spits out onto Three Springs Road right here, and you'll see that Aviation Heritage Park is just to the left side of the screen there. The current zoning of the property is agriculture, with a current use also of agriculture. The future land use category for this property is mixed-use residential. Looking at our site characteristics review section, under the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, the setbacks will adhere to those in the RM3 zone, which includes a 25-foot setback when adjacent to any single-family residential use. So if we go back to the land use map, the properties that are shown in yellow, the development would have to include at least a 25-foot setback from those property lines. Touching on the natural features, we have noted that there is a mature line of trees. I'll jump back to the aerial so you can see those. That runs along the western property line and ranges in width from 30 to 50 feet. There are also mature trees in other areas of the property, and the applicants did not agree to preserve any of the existing mature vegetation. The application complies with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review with considerations noted, again, regarding the preservation of the established tree lines. We have included a density map for your review. And the density shown on this map, properties have densities ranging from 0.26 dwelling units per acre to 5.58 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for this development is 8.63 dwelling units per acre. Touching on proposed open space, the maximum lot coverage in RM3 is 80%, which typically requires a balance of at least 20% open space. The applicants did agree to provide a minimum of 25% open space in their development plan conditions, but did not commit to provide any formal recreational open space in the proposed development. And so the application complies with the majority of the criteria in the site design and compatibility review section with considerations noted regarding the proposed open space. Looking at the development plan conditions at the bottom of page three. Number one sets a max building height of two stories. Number two outlines permitted building materials and requires a one-car attached garage for each unit. Number three requires that the development be under singular ownership and management. Four requires uniform lighting for parking areas. Five requires that the developer construct a six-foot-high privacy fence along the northeast and southeast property lines. So if we look at the aerial, that would be the northeast and southeast property lines. So that is where that six-foot fence is proposed. Next, on page four, we've got a few more. Number six addresses access to the property. Seven requires that utilities be located underground, new utilities. Eight requires that the developer provide a landscape buffer along Three Springs Road outside of the right-of-way acquisition planned by KYTC, consisting of no less than six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per 100 linear feet. Nine, if and when a sidewalk is installed on Three Springs Road in conjunction with KYTC roadway improvements, the development shall contain sidewalks connecting to the sidewalks on Three Springs Road. Ten requires 25% open space, and eleven addresses sinkholes. Next, we have a reference to our traffic impact study requirements, and the application was reviewed by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and they did not require a traffic impact study for this proposal. However, they did request that the applicant provide future right-of-way for any necessary roadway improvements. And you'll see that there's a hatched area along the frontage of Three Springs Road, and the applicants have agreed to provide or reserve that area for future right-of-way. Looking at our Focus 2030 category review, we evaluated 17 items. We found that six of those items were in compliance. Three are noted as out of compliance, and there are eight items for the planning commission to evaluate for compliance, the first being LU 1.1.3. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible. Next, LU 2 and 2.1. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development with design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Next, we have LU 2.1.1, which looks at open space, and the planning commission should determine if the proposed open space is of usable and scenic or ecological value. Jumping down to LU 2.1.4, PR 1.7, and NCR 1.1.6, those are the three items we found to be out of compliance because the applicants did not agree to preserve any of the existing trees that are located on the property. Jumping down to HN 1 and HN 1.3, those look at compatibility of infill development and also look at character and pattern of development within the area and its impact on nearby neighborhoods. And then last, HN 2.1 and HN 4, which look at suitability of the proposed housing type and the availability of housing options in the area. And last, I'll wrap up with a couple of points to consider on page one. The first is that there is a mature line of trees along the western property line, ranging in width from 30 to 50 feet. And again, the applicants did not agree to preserve any of this vegetation. And then second, we have noted again that there is no formal recreational open space proposed for this development. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Rachel, it didn't, it doesn't say in the DP conditions a maximum 48 units, but that's what they're asking for, correct? Maybe we can just add that to number one.
I thought that was in there. That's a good catch.
I'm missing it?
No, I don't think it's in there.
We'll just add it to number one in a second. Yeah, just saying a maximum of 48 residential units. Yeah, but it's not in the. It's not in DPCs, I don't think. Also, Rachel, it, it, am I looking, is this gated?
Believe that that's their intent, and there may have been a condition.
I don't see it in the conditions.
Yeah, it's in number six. Vehicular access shall be coordinated with KYTC and shall be gated.
Aha, very good, all right, thank you. Very nice. Okay, any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, sir.
Is the applicant present or their representative?
Good evening again, Chris Davenport, still at 921 College. I still tell, I still swear to tell the truth. That's hard for a lawyer to say sometimes. Tell you what.
Thank you, Chris. Burn you, Hamp.
Excluding Hamp. Commissioner Volker's right. When I was reviewing this this afternoon, I noticed that somehow the 48-unit max was not included, and staff probably thought I was trying to pull one, but they didn't point it out. So I think we need to add on number one, the development shall contain no more than 48 dwelling units, period, and then continue with no building shall exceed two stories. And I'll have Mr. Van Molly swear to that whenever I'm finished. Points I would like to stress here on behalf of Mr. Van Molly, who's here tonight, this is 5.56 acres, and I would submit to you all, this is kind of a prime example of an infill development. To the left is the most recent development that has come out there. That was this development, if I'm not mistaken, that was the development that was resulting multifamily. Am I right about that, Rachel? Remind the wrong spot. Okay, well, regardless, what I want to point out is that five and a half acres, no development was ever required to stub into this. And that's why you, I mean, obviously, you can see the only access is from Three Springs Road. So it's truly a pocket. We're looking at five and a half acres on Three Springs Road, an area that obviously has been, it's had development potential and pressure on it for a while. Things were growing out that way. And the question is, I would submit to you, I would submit to you, this is a prime use of that infill acreage. So that's the first point I want to make. This is flumed mixed-use residential, that's why I know flume is required. I want to point that out. This isn't even a moderate density or a low-density residential. This is a mixed-use residential flume designation we're looking at. We are requesting RM3, and the product here is intended, I don't think anyone refers to these as this, but I call these brownstones. I don't know why I feel that way, but I think when you've got the garage with it, two stories, brick, cement, board, siding, to me, that, when you look at what this will look like, to me, that's what I would call a brownstone. You may call it a townhouse, but that's the intention. It's obviously intended to be somewhat upscale. It will be gated, as you all noted, in that one development condition. In response to the, I guess, the recreational components, the intention here is the sidewalks that will connect to the sidewalks on Three Springs, when the road gets widened and improved, that will ultimately connect across the street to the park. The recreational opportunities at Basil Griffin are immense. That is a great facility, probably one of the jewels of our park systems, I would imagine. We would all agree. So that's the intent there. That's how we intend to help the residents here have access to those facilities and that recreation. So the big, the big elephant in the room then is transportation. And I heard a couple snickers from the back when it was mentioned that no traffic improvements or no traffic study were required. So I want to address that a little bit. This, this development was the subject of some pretty intense and involved meetings with the transportation folks. Three Springs Road is slated for substantial improvements. I'll get it wrong if I try to tell you where they're at in that process, but I believe they're fairly far along in when we met with them. And so, to the point that there's, I think, considerable discussion about the intersection here at Small House being a roundabout. And so what they wanted for my client were a few things. They don't want anything in the right-of-way that's already planned and engineered. And so you'll see one of our development conditions, we're not going to put anything in there. That land's going to go to the state. We're not even putting our landscape buffer in there. If you look at one of those development conditions, we're building a landscape buffer outside of that planned right-of-way, not outside of today's right-of-way, outside of tomorrow, whenever the acquisition comes along. We're going to accommodate the roundabout if that's what they decide they want to do. One question I had in that meeting for their engineers is, can we continue to gate this if there's a roundabout? My concern being the vehicular stacking. They looked at it and said that won't be a problem. There'll be plenty of that. So I just mention that because we, we see a lot of times the staff, they point out to you guys that the transportation authorities have suggested improvements, they've required improvements, and there's not a lot of times this much discussion as to how those get determined. This is a unique case because we have a right-of-way acquisition coming along here in the very near future. So I wanted to point that out. Really, those are the points I wanted to make. We've gone ahead and we've agreed to that privacy fence, which is along these perimeters, if I've got my direction right, Rachel, is this the northeast and southeast? I think those are the more established older homes. So we went ahead and volunteered that in the front. uh, established older homes. So, uh, we went ahead and volunteered that in the front end, and I hope that does meet with some satisfaction. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. That's, that's kind of what I wanted to present.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport?
I think the only thing that I'd like to see, just because we did in the other application, is it doesn't say anything about uniformed. I'm assuming there.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, uh, let's do, uh, I think just stick at a number one as a third sentence.
Yeah, it's got the sign or ownership, yeah. I would just add it on two.
Okay. Uh, all structures shall be of uniform design and color. Would that suffice? And I do need to get, uh, Mr. Van Molly to agree to those two before I step down, I guess.
And once again, Chris, I think y'all hit on the points that staff likes to hit on.
Not sure if you just got two good clients in a row, but you've, you've. Except I forgot to include the unit count, so, you know, it's a mixed bag.
That's not on your client.
That's squarely on the lawyer. There's no doubt about that.
All right. Any, any other questions for Mr. Davenport before we bring up Mr. Van Molly?
Chris, um, regarding the mature tree lines on the western portion of the property, is there, what is the reason they're not agreeing to, um?
Mr. Starks, let me get my, uh, bearings straight first. Is, Rachel, would this be the western tree line?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I may be able to address that if, if I can talk to Mr. Shirley.
Okay.
That, that's more of an engineering question. Um, I need to confirm the amount of setback. One issue is, I think, don't, did you say those range up to fifty feet?
Thirty feet, I think. Well, they're thirty feet tall.
So I can probably agree to save some of those. Fifty feet gets too far into the development for me to save that far in. But I'll talk to Mr. Shirley and see if I can't offer some concession there.
I was just thinking about the buffer, uh, buffer for the, you know, you have the housings.
Yes, sir.
Right here. With those trees gone, what's going on?
I believe I can save some of them.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try to ascertain that.
Or, Chris, what about if y'all just do the fence along that side like you've done on the other two sides? Honestly, that's probably.
That's a possibility also.
That's probably maybe the easiest with building and everything.
Talk to, I'll, I'll get an answer for you.
Thank you.
Should I have Mr. Van Molly come up at this point, or you want to wait, Ham?
Your call.
Let me, let me address that, because maybe I can address all of them together.
So we're going to hold off on Mr. Van Molly?
Correct, because I, I may have one more to give him to.
Is there anyone in the audience who has questions or comments regarding this application? Okay, uh, you, we'll get you right after this one. All right.
Hi, Ben. I know you weren't happy to see me walk in the door. My name Denise Cosseel, one sixty Sterling Way, and I promise to tell the truth.
And what was your last name again, ma'am?
Cosseel, C-O-S-S-E-L. So I'm here to represent the residents of Silver Springs, Lake Air Estates, and Three Springs Road. I'm asking you to reject this application because it is not compatible with the surrounding areas. Traffic at the intersection of Three Springs and Scottsville Road will not handle any more additional traffic. Potential flooding will result from the changing from agriculture and the grasslands into moving into a concrete jungle with houses. This zoning change to allow multi-family homes is not compatible, and this is why. Just a few short years ago in two thousand seventeen, and Mr. Davenport was our attorney, who said it was not compatible. Um, and this very fat commission found that the land, now known as Spring Lakes subdivision, was not compatible for multifamily housing. Spring Lakes was rather later approved for single-family homes and borders the property that is being discussed tonight, as does Silver Springs subdivision. This application is asking for the residents of Three Springs Road, Silver Springs, Lake Air Estates, and Spring Lakes to be okay with what has already been determined incompatibility for multifamily. As the commission determined back in two thousand seventeen, the properties bordering Silver Springs subdivision and across the street from Lake Air Estates subdivision and now Spring Lakes are not compatible. For this reason alone, this petition should be denied. The next reason for the change should be allowed is traffic. Anyone traveling Three Springs Road past Three Flealand knows that it needs to be widened to at least four lanes with a center turn lane and some side lanes. The property is where Small House Road intersects with Three Springs, one of the busiest intersections on Three Springs Road. This intersection just cannot handle any more traffic without major changes. Any developer of this property should be fully responsible to fully fund improving these roads to make traffic flow smoothly. Three Springs Road has been promised to be widened for mon- many, many years. In two thousand seventeen, I was given by the state, Greg Thomas, a copy of the Three Springs Road reconstruction widening proposal that was written in two thousand fifteen. Fast forward to two thousand twenty, nothing has still been done. The lady who lives on the corner of Three Springs and Silver Springs was told in two thousand seventeen to be ready to move because of imminent domain would take her home to widen Three Springs Road. Fast forward again to two thousand twenty-two, and still nothing has been done. When GVTP proposed multifamily homes on Spring, where now is Spring Lakes subdivision, the traffic study that was done by Joe Plunk, chief engineer for the KY Transportation Cabinet, Mr. Plunk spoke at the invitation of GVTP at the meeting to change the zoning. Previously, we noted a Kentucky transportation vehicle sitting in the driveway of this very property that we are discussing tonight, and it was on June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. Per Mr. Plunk, they were doing the traffic study he quoted at the meeting. We wondered why it would do a traffic study when the weather was so bad. The traffic study for GVTP is done during the remnants of Tropical Storm Cindy. There's the weather map. And I asked Mr. Plunk, and here is the email, why he would do a traffic study and what would make it change. He says inclement weather, thunderstorms, and snow. At the top of this band, it says this will create a band of heavy rainfall, thunderstorms that will likely train across the same region for several hours, creating flash floods. Along the tracks, we'll see heavy rainfall and likely some strong winds. So why did he not cancel the traffic study? I have an email from him stating that. I asked what would make him change, and that was his comment. Chris Allen from BKO told everybody to stay home. According to Mr. Plunk, we make every attempt to not conduct them during extreme weathers like thunderstorms or snow. So why was it done during the remnants of Tropical Storm Cindy? Mr. Plunk also made the same deal to the developers of Spring Lakes. In lieu of doing road improvements, they gave the state the road frontage to widen Three Springs. That was in two seven, two thousand seventeen. Once again, fast forward to two thousand twenty, and we've seen no improvements. The attorney for GVPT, Mark Alcott, was also the attorney for the Daily News. Coincidentally, the day before the meeting to change the zoning GVT property, there was a story on the front page talking about the widening of Three Springs. Since then, several hundred, maybe thousands of homes have been added farther out the Three Springs corridor. It is almost impossible to make a, a right turn out of Silver Springs, let alone try to make a left one in the morning to go to work. Left turns from Small House onto Three Springs are dangerous without the added traffic coming from this multifamily proposal. Improvements to Three Springs have been promised for years. The reconstruction widening proposal has been completed, deals were made, and still nothing has happened. What is being proposed to make changes to this road for this subdivision? It sounds like after Rachel read the staff report, nothing. Flooding is another concern. We have residents now on Silver Springs who, when it pours rain since this has, Spring Lakes has been added, gets flooded. Once again, this proposal is not compatible with surrounding neighborhoods and has been determined by previous members of this board that Three Springs Road and the dangerous intersection where the driveway of this proposal is positioned should not be allowed. Please make the same decision that was made in the past and do not approve this, and thank you for making the right decision.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who has questions or comments?
All right, sir.
Or different than that, than what she went over? Uh, would you come forward, please? Would you state your name, please?
Yes, sir. My name is Jack Myers.
Mr. Myers, uh, what is your address?
I live at eighteen eighty-nine Twilight Avenue, uh, Bowling Green.
Swear to tell the truth?
It's up there on the screen.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Myers.
Okay, I'm, we've been living in the homes of Spring Lakes subdivision since March of last year, so we've been there a little bit over a year. Uh, we are, my wife and I, we both, I work, uh, we both work. We're seventy-two years old. She's seventy-three in another week, and we have made Bowling Green our home from Nashville since two thousand seventeen. I got family here. I got grandkids, and this is going to be my home until I make my eternal home. But, uh, so what we did, we, when we moved here in two thousand seventeen, I lived in a multifamily, if you will, dwelling. It served us well for that time because we were in an area where those types of facilities were there. Okay? And, uh, but after we decided that we were going to stay in Bowling Green, uh, we decided we'd look around and, and move into another home, regular home, regular-sized home, and we found this subdivision, and uh, and the rest is history. So we've been living there since March the eighth of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, in all the areas where we look, we looked at the areas. Uh, my grandkids go to FCA right down the road. Uh, my son-in-law li- works over on Lover's Lane. We were, it was a great place for us to be, great subdivision. The Silver Springs subdivision was right down the road from us, and you're going across the Hatcher, and you've got the Hidden River, and, and on it goes. And all these are single-family homes that are serving our community very, very well, from what I can experience. And so we ended up at this particular location. Uh, we, we live the second house. My na- our home is the second one on the left, up there on that map. Uh, and we have a very nice piece of property. Uh, we've got a nice foliage or woods or whatever you want to call it behind us, which gives us privacy. I added a patio to my home, uh, where we can have family get-togethers and stuff, and it's, and it's a private area. I have wonderful neighbors. I have a look behind me to see if any of them's here, because in that area, there's only five houses that are, or six maybe, that are affected by that, by this piece, piece of property. And, uh, we, we were really concerned about the foliage. The gentleman that spoke a while ago had maybe addressed a little bit of that with some questions about if that foliage is going to stay there. And, uh, so we, we, that's one of our concerns I have. Um, now, one of the things that they did, and I did not know this was going to happen, uh, the lady that spoke in front of me was talking about the flooded areas. They went and put a ditch across the back of my property, which I didn't know that was going to happen until they were digging in the, in the ground. And then on, right on the other side of that is where all these woods are at. So it gives my family privacy, where we can enjoy ourselves there with, with, with just us there, and I can sit on my back property, and I can see them playing pickleball. I can see the aviation park, where the people are visiting the fireplace, the, the airplanes. And of course, on the other side of us, we have FO, the, uh, KOA campground. We go camping. It's all right there in that area. And, but these are single-family homes, and with that foliage there, it gives us some privacy, but yet we have neighbors in single-family homes all over that neighborhood. We're really concerned about that. I don't see, when I looked at this property, I don't have any pictures to show. I don't even have anything. I'm, I'm talking off the top of my head right now. But I went and took some pictures of the property we're, we're talking about, and I took it from there where I can look across, and I can see where all the property was there. And I saw my foliage that was sitting there. It was beautiful. Why in the world would you guys want to tear it down? Doesn't make any sense. And if they are moving multifamilies in there, which I am, this lady that spoke a while ago, she's a hundred percent right, that area is not for multifamilies. Those are single-family homes that people have come to live in, you know? And, uh, now how that's going to affect our property and the value of property, I don't know for sure, because I don't have any of those numbers, uh, anything to look at there. But it's a, it's a single-family environment where people are living, and then they're coming in there with a multifamily thing, talking about trav- traf- traffic. You haven't seen traffic yet. There's forty-eight places they want to be. So the gentleman that spoke earlier about one home per two-hundred and two, that's two-hundred and two cars. With forty-eight houses, multifamilies, you're talking about a hundred cars or more in that area. The traffic's going to run us crazy. And, uh, but I'm concerned about that foliage. The other thing I'm concerned about is the traffic. When I've been living there, cars coming flying up and down that highway, I know the speed limit's forty-five, but they're hitting sixty-five and seventy miles an hour because it's forty-five. Yet, that's got to be addressed. That's probably not where it's going to happen here. It's going to happen with the other commissions that have to do, address that area. But that place has to be settled down in some way or another because people are flying everywhere. If they're not going to KOA, they flying up and down with, I mean, it's just, it's really overwhelming. That traffic has gotten worse and worse. In my subdivision, I must say it's probably sixty, sixty-five percent full right now, and they're still building homes in my area. When all that's done, and it was all, was with, is all already that's there on the Silver Springs with all those nice homes that's been living there, you know what? They've been there for a long time, and they're establishing their families, and they've already established their families. Now you got a subdivision now with the homes of Spring Lakes, there's a hundred and two or a hundred and nine homes in that area. We're all trying to do the same thing, and we're going to plan on being there for another twenty, thirty years, or forty, fifty, hundred years, however many it is. And, uh, so we're just as getting established as they are and making this family place a place of single-family homes versus the other. The speed lim- I think, I don't know if there's anything from what the gentleman was saying earlier, there's no traffic plans of any kind. Uh, I know they're expanding the road and all that. That's going to happen at some point, but, um, you know, this is, this is addressing us.
You have about forty-five seconds.
Forty-five, okay. And, uh, but this is, this is a concern that I have, you know? And, uh, and for them to say that tra- traffic is not, they're not addressed that yet, that's a mistake. I think this lady that spoke a while ago, yes, this project needs to be put on hold until there's more traffic evaluation and the speed limits and the other areas that's in the future building of this, of this, uh, community.
Thank you, sir.
I know I've worn out your welcome, okay? And I, that's okay.
That's all right. We appreciate.
But you heard what I had to say.
We appreciate you coming out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there any?
I have one thing I said. In reference to them talking about the foliage, that foliage is protected under the agreement we had with GVTP. There is a ten-foot, they cannot touch the foliage. If it's anywhere on that property line, it is protected under the agreement we had with GVTP when we agreed to go for multifamily and allow them to pass the application to go to single families. There's a ten-foot buffer that's adjoining any current property.
But that's only on the property that was rezoned for that subdivision.
But it doesn't apply.
It doesn't apply to this property.
All right. Is there anyone else, uh, in the audience who has questions or comments? And we're going to ask you, if you would please, to restrict your comments to items that have not yet been covered. I know everyone has great intention, but we do have a long agenda, and so we don't want to talk about the same things over and over. You, sir?
We've already talked about traffic, privacy, flooding, uh, compatibility, ag land, property value.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I just, I thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Sir, would you state your name and address for us, please?
I'm Roger Marsh. We live at fifty-six Onyx Court, my wife and I.
All right. Mr. Morris, do you swear to tell the truth today?
I do, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead and make your comments.
Okay. A lot of the issues that I had, as, uh, Ms. Volker just said, that we've addressed, and, and they've been talked about and everything, the traffic being number one. And, uh, the, the gentleman that represented the company that's wanting to build this and everything, he's talking about the maybe possible donating the land for a roundabout and everything. It's truly not going to alleviate the problem and everything. You just got, and I'm a big believer in the roundabouts and everything, but the traffic feeding into that and everything, it's just going to be so steady. I live in the Silver Springs, uh, subdivision. It's not only just a, an issue of being able to turn, uh, to exit the subdivision. If you stop, if you stop to take, to turn into the subdivision, traffic backs up all the way back to Flealand. I mean, it don't take but just a minute, especially in the afternoon and all. So I don't think that a, a roundabout area is going to address the issue and everything. The, another thing on the, my part also, our property is one of those that touches in that corner and everything right there, and I have a concern, uh, the gentleman, he said he was going to put a privacy fence up and everything, and that's good. I was hoping to ask for a berm, maybe some trees planted across the top. I don't know if that's possible and everything. Would be better than a fence. But also, I have a concern, uh, as you mentioned, the flooding, and there are signs already up in that area and everything for the flooding and everything. This water's got to go somewhere. There's a, there's a drainage ditch that runs down through myself and my property owner's line. When it rains come, there's, it's, it's already full. The roadway is full. But another issue that I have, I'm worried about is, once these are built, and my understanding is they're going to be two, two-story buildings and everything, the lighting from this and everything, I don't know how they plan on doing it, but it's going to shine right back in. Our, our, front of our house looks directly at it. It's just, if you just look just slightly to the left there, it's right there, and we'll be looking at that. That's what we look at now and everything. And it's just right behind Mr. Jones's property and everything. All the lighting is going to be, lighting up his property, it's going to be lighting up our property, and I just would like to ask that, if, if nothing else, if this is approved by this board and everything, that the lighting would be addressed in a way that it's, it's not so bright and just shining into our neighborhood and all. And my, of all the issues that's been brought up, like you said, I don't want to go back over them again, but the one thing that I would like to say is that if this board, I would just like to request that at this time, that this development just be put on hold until either further study's done or that the situation on that roadway is addressed and widened. And, uh, once that's widened and everybody know what's going on, where it is, and everything like that, and at least put it off, not, not asking it to. like that, and at least put it off, not, not asking it to deny it per se, but to put it off until we have more understanding of what their plans is for Three Springs Road or the Three Springs Road be, the improvements be done. And, uh, okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morris. Two items that Mr. Morris addressed, one is lighting.
Yeah, we, we need to put something in the DP.
And I think if I'm not mistaken though, Rachel, you correct me, the reason we don't is because it's required or you help me there?
Correct. Yeah. The zoning ordinance has a requirement for lighting, that it be downward and inward and designed to prevent light, minimize light trespass onto adjacent properties.
And that's the reason we don't list it because it's already required.
It's already required. And there's also maximum illumination, illumination levels at the property line that they have to meet.
Right. Perfect. Thank you. And then at some point, I want to allow Mr. Davenport to address drainage. And so I know you have your engineer here and we'll, we'll do that. All right. Very good. Uh, so, uh,
Can I add one? Can I add one?
If you have a comment, if you would, we need to record it for the record, so.
I want to do that. Thank you. You asked my name wrong. It's, it's Marsh, not Morris.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Thanks for correcting me.
My name's Ken Taylor. I live at 170 Silver Springs Road. I've been there seven years. Nobody here tonight's representing me. I've got no problem other than the traffic.
Mr. Taylor, do you swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth. I have spoke the truth.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting you.
He just said he wanted to say the traffic.
Traffic. All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there anyone else in the audience who has any questions or comments regarding this application? All right, sir, would you come to the microphone?
Anything different than what we've already talked about?
Would you state your name for us, please, sir?
Mark Doggett, 1214 Williams Avenue.
Spell your last name.
D-O-G-G-E-T-T. And I swear to tell the truth.
Doggett, go ahead and make your comments.
I don't live in the Three Springs area, but I live nearby, closer to, on, off Small House Road. And I concur with all the previous comments that have been made. And I would encourage you to vote no on this proposal for all the reasons that have been stated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Doggett. And is there anyone else in the audience who has any questions or comments? Would you come to the microphone, sir?
My name's Nick Borders. I live at 125 Sterling Way. I just wanted to.
Pardon me just for a moment. Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanted to talk about the drainage situation in particular. I concur with everything that's been said previously by the commenters and I'm on board with all of that.
Not, not to, not to stop you, but the engineer's going to come up and talk about drainage and one thing.
Just wanted to tell you that I have the property that's right behind it where the water basin is built into my backyard. I have seen the water to my knees several times each year. It has progressively gotten worse since the new development in 2017. And I really have an issue with 80% coverage of the land there in that five acres being covered with concrete and buildings. Where's this water going to go? There is a water reason that runs between my property that goes back.
Sir, he's going to address it. And one thing that we deal with on every application, it is there, it's the applicant's requirement to hold all their water that they're, that they have to. And they'll have to provide a plan before they get permitting for that.
Good. Well, I just wanted to say that I hope that you vote no. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has questions or comments regarding this application? All right. Mr. Davenport?
I'll be first if I may, get Mr. Van Molly to agree to these conditions. And then I will address just very briefly some of the concerns we heard and probably ask Mr. Shirley to address the drainage possibly. Andy, could you come up, please? He's going to swear in.
State your name and address, please.
Andy Van Molly.
And your address, sir?
1085 Timbercrest Court.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So Andy, I'm going to, I'm going to read, I think I've got three revisions here. And then I'm going to read them and I'm going to ask if you agree to these conditions, okay? So on development plan condition number one, it would now read, the development shall exceed, shall not exceed 48 dwelling units. At the end of DPC two, we would add, all structures shall be uniform in design and color. And at the end of number five, we would add and offer development, developer, excuse me, developers shall maintain all healthy and mature trees existing within 10 feet of the western property line. That would be the, the line that Mr. Starks asked about, which I think is, from what I hear, that some of the foliage that was talked about from some of the other folks. So do you, do you agree to those conditions?
Yes.
Hamp, anything further I need from him?
I don't think so.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Van Molly.
Thank you. Thank you.
Brian Shirley, would you come up, please?
Brian Shirley, 1136 South Park Drive. I do swear to tell the truth.
Uh, Brian, do you have anything to add about the, what you do as an engineer, assuming this, this gets rezoned as you get further into the design of, of a project like this and closer to permitting?
Yeah.
With regard to drainage? I know there's a, that's an overly broad question.
This site is unique and it does have a pass-through drainage ditch all the way going through it. So we have to accommodate for that water to still go where it's going. Then we also have to accommodate any increased impervious stormwater and we have to retain that on-site. We can't release that water at any rate faster than what it's going off now. So we're going to be taking in a lot of the water from the Silver Springs development, passing it through along with our water that goes over the basin over at Basil Griffin Park. And we have to coordinate all that with the highway department, make sure all the pipe sizes and culverts are designed to handle that water.
So there'll be two components. Would that be accurate? One is the pass-through water that, that has to be addressed.
Correct.
That's already passing through that property. And the second part would be any new water that your development, um, any new drainage perhaps is a better word, that your new development causes from impervious materials, you would be required to capture that water and, and meter the flow leaving the property, correct?
If we can't release it at a post-development rate that is any higher than the pre-development rate.
That's a requirement for you to move forward. Even if this is approved tonight, you still have to, you have to still meet that threshold after this approval. Is that correct? Very good. Any other questions for, for them, commissioners? All right. Very good. Thank you, sir.
The only thing I would emphasize in response to what some of the opposition is, or some of the neighbors said, I, I'll say this. We should all look forward to the day that the right-of-way is acquired and, and the improvements are made that have been approved at the state level. And we're waiting for that to happen. The roundabout that the state now plans on putting in, if they, if they continue with that, or light like they thought before, either of those will help the speed that the one gentleman talked about. But again, I would just reiterate, when the state looks at a development like this, they are aware of the traffic on Three Springs Road. And it's not, you know, there's, the traffic in Three Springs Road is a lot of development out Three Springs Road. And of course, we're not changing that. We can't make that better. We're also not making that worse. So I think the commitment they've made to reserve the right-of-way to accommodate the roundabout, I think that's absolutely proper.
Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Davenport?
I would just like to ask him to reread the statement regarding the tree line.
Yeah, so Commissioner Starks, the, the last sentence on development plan condition five now reads, "The developers shall maintain all healthy and mature trees existing within 10 feet of the western property line." And so that, that's the third line that didn't have a fence.
Right.
And I'll just tell you, we got a 25-foot setback there. We know we can keep 10 feet of those trees without hurting any of the building envelopes.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I can motion to approve a proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon a general development plan, document number 202268Z County, based upon testimony documents presented in this public hearing, a proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. Further questions, motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by a witness at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Graham.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is passed and will go to the City of Bowling Green Fiscal Court. I apologize. All right. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is 202219 Flume. Marvin and Ruth Ann Benoit have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on a portion of, of a tract of land containing approximately 2.48 acres located at 3379 Claypool Boys Road from agriculture to industrial. And this will be the full 12-member board. And then if that is passed, the same applicant for the same property has requested a zone change from RE residential estate to LI light industrial with a general development plan. We'll hear our staff report.
Thank you, sir. We had a pre-application meeting back in July for the property you just described at 3379 Claypool Boys Road. The current zoning of the property is RE residential estate. The current use is industrial. And the future land use map designation for this property is agriculture. So you have three applications before you this evening, as you mentioned, a future land use map amendment request. If that is successful, a zone change to light industrial. And then also a variance request, which I'll go into in a little more detail in just a second. But the applicants have filed this request in order to continue to operate the existing carburetor assembly business that is currently in operation on the property. On page two, you'll see our reference to the future land use map amendment criteria in LU 1.1.4. This outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. And at the bottom of page two, you'll see in the italicized text, the narrative that was supplied by the applicant as a part of their request. And the planning commission should determine if the applicants have adequately addressed the criteria to amend the future land use map. Looking at the layout, under the site characteristics review, the proposed layout is shown here on the screen. And the setbacks will adhere to the requirements in the LI zone, except for a 29-foot setback from the adjacent residential use for which the applicants have requested a variance. The typical requirement is 50 feet and they're requesting a setback of 29 feet. And that is for the existing structure. That corner down here is what that variance request pertains to. Under transportation infrastructure, we have noted that the current road width for Claypool Boys Road is 16 feet, which is less than the county standard. The application does comply with the majority of the items in this section with considerations noted regarding the road width for the property. One thing I didn't mention is that the, the applicants did not address access to the property from Claypool Boys Road, so we do have that noted as a consideration as well. Looking at the site design and compatibility review section, I'm going to jump back to the current land use map here. And the area is comprised of large agricultural tracts with several single-family uses also located along Claypool Boys Road. There are also vacant tracts and a public institutional use in the vicinity. There are no other industrial uses that currently exist. The property is currently subject to code enforcement action for the operation of an aftermarket carburetor assembly business and industrial use in the RE zone. The development plan conditions limit hours of operation to Monday through Saturday from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Carburetor testing on the property shall not exceed 180 minutes per day and shall occur between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM. At no time will operations on the property exceed noise, noise levels of 80 decibels at any property line. There shall be a maximum of 10 employees. And the planning commission should consider if the continuation of the existing business at this location, when considering the parameters for the business outlined in the development plan conditions, is compatible with the surrounding agricultural and adjacent residential properties. Looking at proposed open space, the maximum allowable lot coverage in the LI zone is 90%. The applicants did agree to limit the lot coverage to 50% in the development plan conditions. The staff has noted that the maximum lot coverage for the current RE zone is 30% and for the nearby ag zone parcels, the max lot coverage is 25%. The planning commission should consider if lot coverage of 50% is appropriate in this location and the impact of such lot coverage on the existing agricultural and residential view shed along Claypool Boys Road. Touching on signage, the proposed LI zone allows signage up to 30 feet tall with a maximum sign face area of 100 square feet. The only existing signage in the area is subdivision entrance signage and signage for a church, neither of which are, are the height or size permitted in the light industrial zone. The applicants did agree to limit freestanding signage to a maximum of six feet in height with a maximum sign face area of 50 square feet. The applicants did not address the style, i.e. pole or monument, or the type of illumination, internal or external, for the proposed signage to be installed on the property. And the planning commission should consider if the proposed height and sign face area, coupled with the lack of restrictions on style and illumination, is compatible with the existing agricultural and rural character that exists along Claypool Boys Road. The application complies with some of the items regarding site design with considerations noted regarding the continued operation of an industrial use in an existing agricultural and rural setting, hours of operation, number of employees, proposed signage and proposed open space. The planning commission should consider if the proposal is compatible. Looking at the development plan conditions, number one states that no use other than the continued automotive part manufacturing and assembly shall be allowed on the property. Two, in the event ownership of the property is transferred to a non-failing member of the current owner or any person unaffiliated with the current industrial operation, all industrial and/or commercial operations on the property shall cease immediately and the property shall revert to residential estate. Three outlines hours of operation. Four outlines hours of operation for carburetor testing. Again, that would be between 10:00 AM and 6:00 PM, not to exceed 180 minutes per day. Five sets the maximum decibel level at any property line at 80 decibels. Six limits the number of employees to 10. Seven limits building height to two stories. None of the existing structures shall increase in height. Eight outlines building materials. Nine, again touches on signage that we looked at earlier. Ten addresses sinkholes. Eleven addresses tree preservation. Twelve includes considerations for onsite septic systems. And 13 deals with lot coverage. The planning commission evaluated, sorry, the staff evaluated 15 items for compliance and there are 10 items that the planning commission needs to evaluate for compliance. The staff found four items to be in compliance and there's one item that's out of compliance. So first, looking at LU 1.1.1, 1.1.2, and 1.1.3. The planning commission should determine if the applicants have provided sufficient evidence to support the proposed future land use map amendment. If the Flume Amendment to Industrials approved and the planning commission determines that the proposal is compatible, including the continuation of an industrial use in the existing agricultural and rural setting, hours of operation, number of employees, proposed signage and proposed open space, then the proposed zone change would comply with LU 1.1.1, 1.1.2, and 1.1.3. Looking at LU two, the planning commission should determine if an industrial use in this location is high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. Next, the proposal does not comply with 231 because the applicants did not address access to the property. Jumping down to NCR 24 and 241, while the development is located in an area with sufficient water pressure to meet the minimum fire protection requirements, the current future land use map designation for the property is agriculture with a proposed amendment to industrial. The road width for Claypool Boys Road is 16 feet, and the planning commission should determine if the continued operation of an industrial use in this location will result in premature development pressure on the countryside and whether or not it will set a precedent for a loss of farmland and loss of agricultural character in the vicinity. Looking at HN 1.3, the planning commission should determine if infill of an industrial use in this location will strengthen the existing agricultural and residential character that presently exists. And then at the bottom, ED1 and ED3, the planning commission should determine if the approval of a Flume Amendment and rezoning will support the maintenance of the existing automotive part manufacturing and assembly family-owned business. On six, page six, we have referenced the proposed variance application. The zoning ordinance reference comes from Section 473(c), which requires a 50-foot building setback when adjacent to a single-family residential district zone or use. And the properties that are on the bottom side of the site plan here are single-family residential. Triggering that 50-foot building setback, you'll see the corner of the building here is within that area, and the applicants have requested a 21-foot variance from the required 50-foot building setback for the building to remain 29 feet from the property line. KRS 100.243 outlines the findings necessary to grant a variance, and the applicants supplied the narrative there as a part of their application to address these findings, and the planning commission should consider if the applicants have adequately addressed those findings. Jumping back to page one, I'll wrap up with our points to consider. First, there are no other industrial uses that are in existence in the vicinity. The property is currently subject to code enforcement action for operation of an aftermarket carburetor assembly business and industrial use in the RE zone. Two, proposed hours of operation again are Monday through Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Carburetor testing to be limited to 180 minutes per day and within the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And at no time will operations on the property exceed noise levels of 80 decibels at any property line. Three, again, a maximum number of employees proposed at 10. On the next page, we have four more for your consideration. The first noting the road width of Claypool Boys Road at 16 feet and that the applicants did not address access to the site. Second, the lot coverage proposed for this development is 50% compared with 25% and 30% in the existing ag and RE zone properties that are in the area. Three touches on signage. Again, the applicants have proposed to limit signage to six feet with a maximum sign face area of 50 square feet, but they did not specify the style or type of illumination for proposed signage to be installed on the property. And last, the planning commission should consider if the continuation of an industrial use in this setting, including the hours of operation, number of employees, signage, and proposed open space is compatible with the surrounding area. That is all for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions for staff regarding this application?
Rachel, really, we're cleaning up an operation that's already in place.
Well, it's currently under code enforcement. We received a complaint, and so they are currently operating in violation of the zoning.
Okay. Commissioners, I'll ask, I know I do this myself. If you have comments, please pull your microphone forward so that we can make sure we record it for the record. Other questions?
A few. I noticed in your pre-application conference report, there's some staff notes to talk about this. It should be a heavy industrial zoning, but now we're looking at light industrial?
Preliminary, we thought it would fall under that, but after we communicated with the applicants on numerous occasions and they explained the in-and-out operations each day, we were able to determine that it could fall under the light industrial category instead.
And on the application, that there's a lack of traffic, and this should be approved because of their tenure at the location? So, you know, is it because this is, is it a specialized or something? What is?
They may need to address that. I'm not sure what went behind that argument that they listed in their application. We just listed that there for your reference.
So how long have they?
I do not know.
And then, under the general development plan conditions, there's the note that if the family quits doing this business and the property goes to another source, another person, that it will revert to residential estate. Who enforces that?
We would enforce that, and we would have to come back to this commission through another public hearing to rezone it back to residential estate at a later date.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present or their representative?
Chris Davenport, 921 College. Swear to tell the truth. Did better that time. Let me hand to Mr. Moore, two powers of attorney. Mr. Benoit, Mrs. Benoit are the actual owners of the property. I have today Ms. Angela Neely, who's their daughter. Mr. Benoit and his wife are, they're not very well. They're older in life and just physically couldn't be here. So I've done that. So if we need to tweak anything, Angela can stand up in their stead and bind them under that limited power of attorney. In fact, one change I know I'm going to make, Rachel, is on, about the signage. They don't have a sign. They will not have a sign. There's really no purpose. You know, when I originally submitted this, there was no mention of sign at all. They wanted to limit it. I went with what was safe. Angela has said they don't want a sign. They don't tend to have a sign. So I would suggest, number nine, read, that the property shall have no sign associated with any commercial or industrial enterprise. That way, they could feel free to put whatever campaign sign they might want in any yard, but they can't have any sign like we talk about signs. This is obviously a different type of application. To answer the one question, they've been in operation there for five years. What started as Mr. Benoit's hobby, and that is racing cars and building cars, kind of, the term I use in the application was organically. It grew into an aftermarket carburetor assembly business, pretty, kind of a niche market. I find it's kind of cool, but it started as a hobby. And it's a family business. I think right now, like 40% of their small amount of employees are all family members. I think we put in here no more than 10 employees. I think they operate with five right now. So it's been there for five years. One might ask, first question I had when they called me was, well, what happened? They had a contractor on site that was doing some work. Things did not go well. There is litigation pending, and they got a code enforcement complaint. So I do not believe that initiated from a neighbor, from anyone that lived out there. We believe that's how it started. So, but, be that as it may, they're not in compliance. That use is not allowed in RE zoning, and that's why we're here tonight. Rachel is right. We started thinking we were going to have to have a heavy industrial. We hired an architect because the improvements that would be necessary for heavy industrial to the current structures is a lot more involved than with light industry. And fortunately, as we talked more about their family operation, staff concluded that we would fit under light industrial if we follow the DPCs that we put in there about noise levels, the different, because when you get into difference between LI and HI, it gets really detailed about exactly what you're doing. And so with the DPCs we have, we don't have to change what we're doing, and we would qualify under light industrial. On the variance, I do want to point out that we're asking for a variance from our own properties. Okay? So Mr. Benoit owns everything you see, not just here, but here also. This is where the family members live. There's a residence here, three residences here. I think that's important to point out, that the variance we're asking for is from our own property. And then the last point I'll make, this reverts back to RE if our family, their family doesn't own it, is not operating this. We don't want, you know, the slippery slope argument is something you all hear. I would submit to you, probably for five years, nobody knew this was going on. My clients didn't know they were out of compliance. As soon as they learned that, we started the process of trying to get them in compliance. And so I would submit to you with that reversion clause, there's no real threat here of an industrial development breaking out on Claypool Boys Road, if I got that right. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all have.
Commissioners, questions? Mr. Davenport?
Well, go back to the question I had earlier. You know, there's a note that this should be approved because of lack of traffic. What kind of, you know?
The point I'm trying to make there is, this is an assembly operation with a handful of employees that come in each day. This is not a manufacturing, large scale, truck delivery. That's, we're talking carburetors. So it's, what I'm trying to get at there is just a scale. When we see industrial, we are absolutely inclined to think of tractor-trailers coming and going routinely and that type of transport, that type of traffic. We don't have that.
What you're getting at is that deliveries in and out are in, you know, UPS, parcel carriers.
Correct.
Things of that nature.
And I know that the frequency Amazon comes to my house is probably a little bit borderline on a duster. But.
Chris, I do have one question. So let's go back to the complaint. To your knowledge, there's no issue with the neighbors here. This perhaps originated from a disgruntled someone that worked on the site. Is that correct?
It's my understanding from Ms. Neely.
All right.
And Mr. Benoit, although he's not here tonight, I have talked to him.
Pardon me? Yeah. All right. Very good. Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions?
Something about litigation. What?
Yeah, and maybe I shouldn't have, Mr. Starks. I'm just giving you a little flavor there.
Okay.
The disagreement they had with this contractor.
Oh, okay.
About what was performed and what should have been performed and the standard with which it was performed, it was bad enough that it led to a lawsuit. And so things are not dreamy with the contractor. And that'll play out. That really has nothing to do with you all. I didn't mean to conflate that.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who has any questions or comments regarding this application? Yes, ma'am. Would you come forward?
Everybody ready to go home?
Would you state your name and address for us, please?
My name is April Fike, F-I-K-E.
Fike.
I live at 3221 Claypool Boys Road.
All right. Ms. Fike, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
All right. Go ahead and make your comments or ask your question.
Just to give you an idea, I guess this is the planner here. What do we have? Okay. So those three homes, if there was a fourth one, that's me. That's where I live, on the corner, and it's cut off on your map there. So just to give you an idea of where I live. To try and make this brief, I bought my home in 2015. Their business did not exist, to the best of my knowledge, then. In 2017, they started creating this building, I believe. I think that was the one that, of course, I don't know the inner workings, but according to their lawyer, there's litigation from this. And from what we saw from our backyard, I'm not surprised. There were broken water mains, yards were flooded. There has been noise issues that I actually discussed with Angela and Tam, the daughter and the son-in-law, when they appeared on my doorstep last night at 7:00 to plead their case. Basically, our neighborhood is, it's a subdivision, and it has a real name. It's Oliver's Landing. It's all residential. It's been residential since, I believe, the late 80s or early 90s. I think it went from single-family into rural residential estate. I could be wrong, but I think that's right. When they created their additional buildings and, I guess, life happened and they had issues, and they finally got everything done, the noise started to be an issue. We're talking drag racing, y'all. These are aftermarket carburetors. I want you to imagine going out on your back porch to enjoy an evening, and it sounds like you're at Beach Bend. Okay? So it's pretty loud. It's really loud. And we actually never said anything because we were the new kids in the neighborhood. And who wants to be that neighbor? Who really wants to be that neighbor, you know? But the general consensus after I scrambled in the last 24 hours is that none of the neighbors wanted to say anything because of who this gentleman is. So Marvin Benoit created quick fuel technology, and is apparently very esteemed and avid car enthusiast, which I have nothing against. I appreciate a good race and fine car myself. But they're essentially, you know, they've been operating secretively in the neighborhood when everyone that lives around them was just under the impression that they were just super avid race people. So now the dirty secrets come out that they've been doing this business. And, you know, and this is not a personal attack. I'm sure they probably feel that way. I don't know them personally. We just met last night. But, you know, their business is affecting not just my home and my family, an entire subdivision that's been established for quite some time. There is actually quite heavy traffic that comes up and down Claypool Boys Road. Some of it pertains to some of the farms towards the end of the road. Some of it is, I'm assuming, their customers because we're talking chargers and a couple vets and, you know, some fast cars. And then, of course, we have bus traffic and normal, you know, kid traffic. There's a bus stop just a few hundred feet. It's actually at the mouth of the entrance to the trace, if you know where I'm speaking of, the old golf course where you turn into. So the road not being wide enough is an issue. The noise is an issue. The safety is an issue. And, you know, I plead with you all to think, how would you like if one of your neighbors in your neighborhood or your community started a business, didn't tell anybody, disturbed everyone, but everyone was like, let's be cool, guys? And then it turns into this? Because in my mind, if you give them this, they can expand. They can bring more traffic in and not get in trouble. They can make more noise and not get in trouble for it. I mean, this is a quality of life. There's a whole reason we moved out there. There's a whole reason we don't live in the city. We don't live on Industrial Drive. We don't live on Dishman Lane. It is a rural area, residential strictly. And, you know, I respect them for surviving COVID and being a family business. I have ultimate respect for that. But it is very selfish of them, honestly, to make a whole neighborhood suffer because they don't want to move their business. In my mind, you need to move your business if you want it to thrive. Because, you know, personally, I wouldn't do that to my neighborhood. I'm sure it's lovely for them to stay home and be close to home and work. I mean, wouldn't we all love that? But the safety and the noise is just, there was a stipulation mentioned about the noise, about the hours being from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. I brought that up with Angela last night when we met, and I told her face to face, ma'am, I can assure you, it's been earlier than 10:00 a.m., and it's been longer or past 6:00 p.m. It's gone all day. And, you know, she said she wasn't aware, but, you know. At the time, in hindsight, you have to realize, we didn't realize it was a business. We didn't, we just thought it was, you know, gung-ho race guy next door. And so what do you do there? How do you approach that? Now, this seems to be the only way I can approach it, and I truly hate it, but I really, really urge you to deny this. I don't think this is the same as turning an agricultural lot into a multifamily, you know, residence or multifamily complex. These are already established homes, single-family homes, and have been for years. And we really don't need the extra traffic and the extra noise anymore. And that's really where I stand. I don't want to go on too much longer.
Ms. Fike, we appreciate your comments, and thank you for coming out. Mr. Davenport, do you, I'm sorry, is there anyone else in the audience? Would you state your name and address for us, please?
My name's Perry Thesson.
And your address, Mr. Thesson?
2107 Old Scottville Road, Alvin.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
All right. Please make your statement or ask a question.
About two years ago, I purchased what used to be the old Trace Golf Course, and there was a clubhouse on it that we tried to work with a church to use that building for a club, for a church. And anyway, I still own one building lot that's right there on the Trace Drive. But anyway, the applicant opposed the church to operate there. So it seems kind of ironic that they would oppose a church. seems kind of ironic that they would oppose a church, but yet make an application for industrial zoning in a residential neighborhood. So that's essentially all I've got to say. I do have the petition that they signed. Excuse me. They did sign a number of times opposing the church.
Thank you, Mr. Thesson.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has questions or comments regarding this application? Okay. And Mr. Davenport?
Yeah, just one thing I want to...
Question I have for Ms. Fike. I know we don't do that a whole lot anymore, but... Do we have something that will show the... Ms. Fike, could you come back up, please?
Yeah, you mentioned that you were on the corner. Can you point out where your lot is?
Okay, you see the open field there?
Uh-huh.
I was gonna say, the aerial, I think, is cut off, though. Like, my back porch is literally down.
Can I see the pointer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So here, the corner you pointed out earlier is this corner. But this isn't your house, right? This is one of Mr. Benoit's houses.
That's his main residence.
Okay. And then who lives here?
That is a house for sale.
Okay.
That's why I said in that picture, I'm out of frame. Right next to that is a white house, which is my next-door neighbor.
And then you're down here.
And then I'm the next one. That's why I said I'm three lots down from the corner of the bottom of the picture. Sorry for the confusion.
Nope, that's what I want to clarify.
But yeah, not the bottom of the red line where it's showing, you know, what's highlighted, but the bottom of their final drive that goes past the primary residence.
Thank you. Yep. So I think I still need Ms. Neely to swear to that DPC change with the sign. Angela, would you come up, please?
He's gonna swear again.
Would you state your name and address, please?
Angela Neely, 3379 Claypool Boys Road.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Angela, did you hear the DPC revision I made that basically said there would be no sign associated with commercial or industrial enterprise on the property?
Correct.
And on behalf of your parents, do you agree to that?
Yes, sir.
And they've signed the powers of attorney to authorize you to agree to that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Understand what Ms. Fike had to say. The only response I really have to that is, she asked a rhetorical question. And the rhetorical question in it was, well, what keeps them from changing their noise levels and changing their hours? That's what the development conditions do. And that's true with every application y'all have that comes before you. That is really an invitation to assume that they won't. And I really don't think that assumption is fair. So you don't have a lot of background, okay, with what you've been presented, as far as to put a context. Dr. Google tells me that a gas lawnmower operates at 95 decibels. Okay? Now, that's Google, so Google's dangerous. But the development condition that was offered as a suggestion by the staff is 80 decibels at the property line. And I'll tell you, that number didn't come from anywhere. It came primarily first by our client testing the sound on their property, their operations, and providing that to staff to indicate what noise was produced. And again, that's at the property line. So...
So, Chris, I'll ask the question that I'm sure we're all thinking right now, which is, clearly, the applicant lives in the neighborhood. Clearly, they've heard the sound. Clearly, it's objectionable to them. And why wouldn't we just ask your applicant to move to an industrial site?
That's an option they have, but the obvious answer to that is the cost involved and the infrastructure they have in place. And I'll say this, the convenience of where they are, given the fact that their homes surround this, basically where they operate. Those are the two interests they have in staying where they are.
Thank you, Chris. Any other questions for Mr.... I'm sorry?
There we go. I think I would like to just clarify one thing. The staff did not ask for a decibel level. We asked for the measurements of the levels. And what was presented was presented by them for that level. I just want to make sure that's clear. I don't want to confuse.
So it wasn't a request for a specific decibel level that the staff requested?
Correct.
Very good.
We tested, and then what we proposed was something that we knew we could not violate.
Good. All right. Is there any other questions for Mr. Davenport? Okay. Hearing no other questions and no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Yes, I thank you, Hamp. Just on the Flume Amendment, that is correct.
I'm making a motion to deny the proposed future land use map amendment, docket number 2219 Flume. As upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has not met the directive to amend the Flume as outlined in LU 1.1.4 in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Before we take our vote, would you give us the customary explanation here?
So there's been a motion to deny the Flume Amendment. And so, knowing how to vote yes or no is the challenge. If you're in favor of denial, then you would vote yes. If you are opposed to denial, you would vote no. So denial, yes. No denial, no.
Commissioner Cecil?
Yes, deny.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
No.
Commissioner Gay?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
No.
Commissioner Blackburn?
No.
And Chair Graham?
Yes.
So there were five votes yes, four votes no. So the motion to deny has received approval, and the Flume Amendment is denied.
So with the Flume Amendment being denied, the other two applications will not come forward. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we don't have... This isn't one of those things where we have to take an affirmative vote, correct? It's just been denied and we move on?
Correct. The reason for that, of course, is that when you're making a recommendation, you'd need to take an affirmative vote. But the Flume Amendment request has been denied.
Okay. So the request has been denied. That will... No further action, correct?
Appeal this to Circuit Court.
All right. Very good. All right. Thank you for being here. Our next... The next item on our agenda is 202220 Flume. Wayne and Elva Overholt have filed an application for a future land use map amendment on tracts of land containing approximately 1.85 acres located at 2456 Russellville Road and Zero Enterprise Court, from commercial to industrial. And this, they have also filed, if that motion, if that application is approved, they have also filed an application for a zone change for the same property from highway business to light industrial with a general development plan. We'll have our staff report.
Thank you, Chair Graham. Thank you for your patience this evening. I know it's getting late. I am going to actually start out on this one with the first point to consider at the bottom of page one. And the purpose of this application is that the applicants would like to redevelop the existing site. It is legal non-conforming as it currently exists, meaning it's grandfathered in, because in the current highway business zone, if this property were vacant today and they wanted to do what is shown on the aerial, that would not be allowed. The product display in highway business is limited to 5% of the site area, and product display areas have to be paved. The zoning ordinance says that when you demolish a structure on property that contains a non-conforming use, that you have to bring the property into compliance with all requirements. They want to tear down the structure and build a new structure, but still continue to utilize the property for the sale of the storage buildings. So that's what brings us here this evening. The first application being a future land use map amendment to industrial. The applicants supplied a narrative on page two, the italicized text. So the planning commission should determine if the applicants have adequately addressed the criteria to amend the future land use map. Going to touch on the site plan, maybe? Did I go too... Well, what is happening? It was on there earlier. I don't know where it went. That's the existing... Okay. Look at page 13. So, please reference page 13 while I go through this section of the staff report. The existing structure, as I mentioned, is proposed to be removed, and the site will be redeveloped with a new structure. That's the orange box that's shown on the site plan. And as I mentioned, the amount of product display is limited in the current highway business zone, but in light industrial, you are allowed unlimited product display. And product display areas in light industrial can be gravel if located behind the front of the principal structure. The display area shown on the rezoning exhibit meets this requirement, but is in conflict with the current HB zone and commercial future land use category. Staff suggested that the applicants consider paving the product display area that is closest to Russellville Road, but the applicants did not agree to this. So the application complies with the majority of the items in the site characteristics review, with considerations noted regarding the gravel display area that is proposed nearest Russellville Road. Under site design and compatibility, staff found that the application complies with the majority of the items regarding site design, and the planning commission should consider if the proposal is compatible. Looking at the development plan conditions, development plan condition one basically limits the use of the property to HB uses only, with the exception of outdoor display in unlimited quantities as permitted in industrial zones. And they did also prohibit the specific uses that are listed in development plan condition one. DPC two addresses building materials, three, building height, four, utility placement, five, the applicant agreed to donate salvageable materials, and also to donate the structure to the fire department for training, six addresses sinkholes, seven, access, and eight signage. We evaluated 16 items from the comprehensive plan. We found six of those to be in compliance. Two were out of compliance, and I'll touch on eight that you need to review. The first being LU 1.1.2, sorry, 1.1.1, 1.1.2, and 1.1.3, which deal with the future land use map amendment and compatibility. LU two, the planning commission should determine if the proposal will result in high-quality development, including the gravel display area proposed nearest Russellville Road, and if it will protect the character of the area. LU 252 and 253, which look at compatibility of infill development and redevelopment. The two that are not in compliance are NCR 25 and NCR 253, because the historic structure is proposed to be demolished. And then last, HN1 and HN1.3, which look at character and pattern of development. And then on page one, I already read the first point to consider. But again, I'll just touch on the product display area. Again, the amount of product display is not limited in light industrial, and the light industrial display areas can be gravel if located behind the front of the principal structure. The display area on the site plan, again, that's on page 13, meets the requirements, but is in conflict with the current HB zone and the commercial future land use category. So staff suggested that the applicants consider paving this area, but the applicants did not agree to this. That is all for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, questions for Rachel, her staff? So if I may, I just want to get clarity here. They are grandfathered in. They can stay there as long as they want to, keep doing exactly what they're doing.
Yes.
But if they want to rebuild something on the site, then that's what triggers this?
If the structure is demolished, that's what triggers... If they redevelop the property, that's what triggers compliance.
So apparently, they've applied for a permit to...
Not yet. They're just doing this in anticipation of wanting to redevelop the property.
Very good. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
But the only thing they have not, will not comply with is the paving.
Well, that's the requirement in the current HB zone and under the current future land use category. So we had suggested that perhaps the area nearest Russellville Road include a paving component. And then, if you look on page 13, there's also a display area that's proposed back toward the rear portion of the site that would be gravel. And as shown, the area up here nearest Russellville Road is proposed to be gravel also.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt.
Is there a reason why they do not want to pave it? Did they give a reason?
Ms. Ritchie, they may be able to answer that here in just a minute.
Any other questions for staff, commissioners? All right. Thank you, Ms. Hurt.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or their representative here tonight?
All night? Boy, busy. Chris Davenport, 921 College Street. I swear to tell the truth. I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Overholt. Wayne's with me tonight. So you're going to end your night on two kind of strange, different applications. As Commissioner Volker pointed out, what Wayne's wanting to do is build new, nicer building. And in a catch-22, he can't do that without losing the rights he already has unless we rezone. And so, the grand bargain here that he's suggesting is, he's asking for an LI zoning. But if you look at the development conditions, he's limited to HB uses, excluding the normal exclusions, and product display. So it's kind of like HB horse with the stripes of a zebra with the product display, if you follow my reasoning. So that's the goal here. One thing I think I probably need to do, I just asked Wayne, Wayne, when do you plan to build a new building? And it's probably going to be a year. Rachel, we didn't really think about this, but in DPC number two, if you look at what he's agreed to as far as the design restrictions for that building, I think they're restrictive. But I think we need to add on number two, any new structure. And the reason for that is, if this passes, that structure may immediately be out of compliance with his development conditions until he tears it down and builds a new one. I think that probably makes sense to do that. But other than that, the only change of the property would be, the use of it wouldn't change. The only change in the looks of it will be, there'll be a better building on it. And so that's what's being asked.
Chris, I guess the question is, will he?
He doesn't want to. He wants to continue... I mean, first of all, paving the tired of it, it makes no sense to him. And there's no reason to do that. He wouldn't need to rezone it if he did that. I asked him the same questions, and the same question, and he'd like to keep it the way it is, just with a better building.
So, Chris, you alluded to an LI zoning with a lot of restrictions. The reason for doing that is just that's the slot that this fits in?
So his use will be a HB use, with the exception of the product display, which is only allowed in LI. But I don't want to come here today and ask for LI. That could be a lot more intense use. The only aspect of LI he's looking for is what he already has, and that's the product display.
And if he were to sell this property, we haven't opened Pandora's Box here and allowed a full-blown LI use here. These restrictions go with it.
They run with the deed. They run with the deed.
All right. Very good. Any other questions for Chris? Commissioners? Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present in the audience tonight that has any questions or comments regarding this application? All right. Hearing the...
One addition I might make, Chair Graham, that Jase just told me a good point. He will... good point, he will have to landscape too. So when I talk about looking better than it does with a new building, he will also have to landscape with the rezoning.
Commissioners, any other questions? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map amendment to docket number 2022-20 Flume, based upon a testimony documented in this public hearing. The Flume Amendment has met the directive of the Flume as outlined in LU 114 in the comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Cecil? Commissioner Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Graham?
Yes, ma'am. And with that passage, we will now move to the second item, which is the zone change, and we'll entertain a motion for the zone change.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition upon a general development plan, docket number 2022-70CBG, based upon a testimony documented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted Focus 20-Herth-30 comprehensive plan. It's demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think that is the last item on our agenda. Thank you all for your patience and dealing with me tonight. We did get to the end of it, though. Any other items? Any old business?
No further business. No further business. I'll just mention Monday, we are having another conference of plan update meeting on... Housing, and that is at 5:30 at 701 East Main at the Neighborhood Community Services Office Community Room. And that is obviously a big topic. We hope we have a good turnout, lots of input. And just as a preview, this is things that the planning commission has not seen yet, but we have had previews or pre-applications for about 3,000 housing units in the past two months. And that is stuff you all have not seen yet, so...
How many things we have the next meeting?
Next meeting, of course, I believe, is fall break, so we won't have that one. And the deadline for the meeting after that is not until next Thursday. However, we have, it might be a lot.
That one's the one going to be heavy?
12, 13 items, yeah.
Wow.
12, 13 items and none of the Flumes?
And no Flume, it's a...
And that's, yeah, that's some heavy stuff there.
So the only other thing I'll mention is that the conference of plan meeting we'll have after that will be Monday, October 17. And that will be over the future land use map, the next element. So this should be another interesting topic, but that's all I have.
Good. No other issues, our meeting is adjourned.